I'd like to call to order the Reevesville City Council meeting Tuesday, May 9th, 2023. We will have invocation by the Reverend Andrew Graham, Pastor of Main Street United Methodist Church, 221 South Main Street. Pastor Graham, I don't mean to embarrass you, but Pastor Graham is one of-
It's gonna have to be really bad if you're gonna go to it.
Pastor Graham is one of my former fifth grade students at Williamsburg. I might say the best elementary school in Reevesville, Texas.
I agree. Let us pray. Almighty God, our guide and our guardian, unto you all hearts are open, all desires known, and from you no secrets are hidden. Pour out upon your people wisdom, understanding, and courage as we work to build a just and righteous community. Guard us from human will and limited imagination. Enable us to do more perfectly the work to which you have called us, that we may not fear the coming day when we shall resign into your hands the life we live and the work which you have committed to us. So, may we serve you not with our mouths only at this hour, but in word and deed all the days of our lives through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Could we all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Reevesville High School's boys watching the basketball team won't be here tonight. We were to recognize them on tonight. It seems that spring football has started, and about ten of the players are practicing the day they will get done until about 7:30, 4:00 or 8:00 or so. And the Reevesville High School baseball team made the playoffs this year, and about three or four of the boys are there also. So hopefully we'll be able to get them here next month so we can congratulate them on a 26-1 season. But we do have retired Lieutenant Shannon Coats here tonight, celebrating a 30-year career in Reevesville. Lieutenant, if you could come forward. This has a whole lot of weight to it. Certificate of appreciation. Whereas Lieutenant Shannon Coats began his career in law enforcement with the Reevesville Police Department as a patrol officer on June 20, 1994, officially retiring from the department on March 1, 2023, with 30 years in the state retirement system.
That's a long time.
For some of us it wasn't long enough. I wish you could've stayed a little bit longer. Whereas Lieutenant Coats also served as a tack officer, narcotics investigator, juvenile investigator, criminal investigator, and member of the special response team during the first nine years of his career with the Reevesville Police Department before being promoted to sergeant in 2005, when he was assigned to the Special Investigations Unit, working street-level drug enforcement. Whereas, once promoted to lieutenant, in 2012, he held a position in Patrol and Investigation Division, was the watch commander and administrative lieutenant, also serving as interim captain in 2021. He did everything but chief. Whereas all these diverse positions within the department made Lieutenant Coats into a well-rounded officer and supervisor who treated his subordinates, victims, and criminals with respect, and was able to use his unique ability to make suspects so comfortable that they would usually confess the crimes he was investigating. In my day, we called you a bad dude. Whereas described as an investigator at heart, Lieutenant Coats would rarely just read and assign cases, but often help bring those criminals to justice, working cold cases with the FBI and helping other investigators with their cases, displaying a rare work ethic up until the last day on the job. Now therefore, I, Donald L. Gorham, on behalf of the Reevesville City Council, take great pleasure in recognizing and honoring Lieutenant Shannon Coats on the occasion of his retirement from the Reevesville Police Department, and thank him for his dedication to the citizens of Reevesville, who enjoy a safer place to live because of his unwavering desire for justice. This is the ninth day of May, 2023.
I didn't realize I did that much. But it wouldn't be right to not say this and mention this, but I'll have to give credit to Councilman Festman, who was the chief at the time, made the best decision his whole career in hiring me. He probably won't say that, but I'm gonna say it.
I don't disagree.
But truly, thank you for calling me in the office that day and talking and taking a chance in me and believing in me. But it was a true honor. Doesn't seem like it's been that long. Time flies, but it was a true honor to work for the city and hold these positions down over my career. I truly enjoy it and hope over the 30 years I did make a difference for somebody. I believe I did.
You did.
But I think so. But it was a true honor, and thank y'all.
Thank you so much. Want to let us know who's here?
Yeah, my dad right there, Skeeter. Everybody knows him as Skeeter. My granddaughter McKinley, my daughter Maddie, and my mom Jinx.
Good man here. I don't know how you can hold that. You gonna need some help taking it to-
I'm gonna put a couple extra nails on both of ya.
Shannon, did you write that?
No. I promise I did. Gave him information, but I did write it.
No, is that the gold watch?
That's the gold watch. We do not expect to see that at Coats' collectible.
No. I put it in the safe place. But thank y'all.
Exactly. Hold on, hold on. Hold on, yeah. And Mayor, if I may, Shannon is still approachable and available, and I'm putting that out for him, so tell everybody where you're gonna be now that you're retired.
Well, playing a lot of golf.
You're gonna be down the street.
Yeah. I have a business that I run, antique store. It's downtown, 239 South Scale Street, so that takes up a lot more time, so that's what I'm doing right now and playing golf. So, that's it.
And Packer Fans, if you want some memorabilia, he's got it.
We got some new stuff too for you.
You do?
Yeah.
I'll be damned.
Mayor, I have one. I'm-
Yeah, I like it.
Shannon, we've had a long, very beneficial friendship for me. I hope you've enjoyed as much as I have. You're an outstanding individual, an outstanding police officer, and a good neighbor. So we wish you the very best in the future.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And Lieutenant, you know, I've gotta shake your hand, because we worked together for so many years, and you've always been an outstanding officer. You've always cared about the community. We always cared about your officers. You've always been faithful and committed, and what a pleasure, what a pleasure it has been to work with you over the years, and I just want you to have a very enjoyable retirement.
Oh, I am. I am. Thank you, buddy. Love you like you are.
And we are extremely proud of your career, but even more, we are so proud that you are a citizen of Reevesville.
I am too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you for your second career.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank y'all again.
Give my hand. Okay, Councilwoman Festman and Councilwoman Hurst, you're gonna do the recognition of
We ask Captain Gibson, Chief, I'm sorry, Chief Gibson to come forward, please. Never been more protected. I'm gonna make a regional proclamation that's been signed by the mayor, and I'll make some comments, and the captain will make some comments, and then we'd like you to make some comments, Keith, if you might.
Yes, sir.
Whereas, as members of the Reevesville Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens, whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, and the hazards and sacrifices of law enforcement agencies, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding their lives and property, protecting them against violence and disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. Whereas the men and women of the Reevesville Police Department provide a vital role in this public safety in our community. Now, I therefore, Donald L. Gorham, Mayor of the City of Reevesville, on behalf of the Reevesville City Council, do hereby proclaim May 14th through the 20th, 2023, as National Police Week, in regional commemorating law enforcement officers past and present. I further call upon all citizens to observe May 15th as Police Officer Memorial Day in the state of North Carolina, in honor of those police officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, or have become disabled in the line of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. This is the ninth day of May, 2023, as signed by the Alma, Donald L. Gorham, Mayor of the City of Reevesville. Captain, would you like to make some comments?
Yes, I just wanna say to all officers, you know, when I became a police officer, the question was asked to me before becoming is why do you want to become a police officer? And I said, because I wanna help people. And, you know, I know that's why you're a police officer, and you prove it in your actions and what you do in our community. And we thank you so much. Thank you so much for your dedication and your commitment to this city. And we, I pray for you, and we pray for you. The Lord will keep you safe and keep you doing a good job. Chief, thank you, all of you, thank you, thank you, thank you, from the depths of our heart.
Thank you, Captain. I'd like to just add too that both Captain and I have the honor and the belches to serve the City of Reevesville for many, many years collectively. I think it's over probably 60 years, probably.
Yes.
And times are different. You know, I really admire what you have to do now. I know that I'm often asked, would you like to do it again? I'd have to say no, but I'm honored and pleased that we have folks who do want to do it. You know, they ask me all the time, what would you do? And I tell them, I've been in a certain situation, I said, I've been retired 20, 25 years, and I know things are different, so I support what you do, I support the men and women of the police department, and I pray for you, and I hope you'll be safe, and please let go knowing that we appreciate what you do and keep you safe.
Thank you.
Chief, if you would, please.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Mayor, thank you. Council members, thank y'all for recognizing this woman. Thank you very much. It is an honor to be recognized, you know, next week is National Police Week, and that's the week that we use to really commemorate the ones that have lost their lives, that paid the ultimate sacrifice for everybody to be free and to have freedoms and to feel safe. And we couldn't have done, we couldn't do it without these two gentlemen and what they built years ago and the foundation they built, especially here in Reevesville. So thank you for your service and what you did to make us what we are today and the police department are. And, you know, as that chief, I'm proud to lead this department. We have an excellent department. I don't do the work. These are the workers right here, and without them, you know, we wouldn't be safe. And retired lieutenant, 30 years, you built it as well when you started, and we appreciate your service as well. But thank y'all, and please keep police officers in your prayers, because it is challenging times, but we have a group here that's up to the challenge, and we dedicate that we're gonna, we're gonna keep Reevesville as safe as we can.
Thank you, Chief. I would be remiss if I didn't also say something to my colleagues who I've had the chance to serve with over many, many years, both past and present. I've never felt like that they were anything but supportive of the police department, and it's been a real pleasure to see that working shift develop over the years. We wish you the best and please be careful.
Well, thank you, and I wanna piggyback off that, because been chief a little over a year and a half, and we have an exceptional council and city manager that supports the police and is awesome to work with. Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you. In this very serious time that we live in, we're blessed to have a police department that serves the citizens of Reevesville with integrity, with care, with love. They take care of us. Next on the agenda, we have recognition of National Public Works Week, May 21 through 27, 2023. Councilwoman Dejanae and Councilwoman Sheriff Walker.
Would representatives from the Public Works come up for us? Proclamation. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of and understanding and informed citizenry is vital in the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets and highways, public buildings, fleet maintenance, water treatment, and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and-
Whereas the efficiency and the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff Public Works Department is materially influenced by people's attitude and understanding of the importance of work they perform. Therefore, Donald Gorham, Mayor of the City of Reevesville, on behalf of the Reevesville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May the 21st through the 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week. In the City of Reevesville, and I can call upon all citizens to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works to recognize the contribution which these employees make every day to our health, our safety, our comfort, and the quality of life. Following this year's theme, Connecting the World Through Public Works, signed this day, the day of May the 9th, 1923, signed by Donald Gorham. So, thank you guys for what you do, and in this proclamation, it said every day, and that's something I think we tend to forget, because maybe on Christmas Eve, when I'm at home fussing about making whatever food I've got to make, if a pipe burst, you guys are there working. In this coming summer months, when it gets up to 98 degrees, and Harry and I are really fussing about how hot it is, if something breaks, you guys are out there in the heat. If it's 10 degrees and a pipe burst, you're out there fixing it. You're available 365 days a year, and there's not enough praise or flattering words or anything that I can tell you to thank you. You keep our water clean, you keep our streets safe in repairs, and I know it's a challenging job, but thank you so much for what you do.
And thank you very much for the beautification that you're doing now, and I think everyone in here really appreciates what you've done to downtown Reevesville. It really will make a difference in the future.
I know it's a cliche, but I wanted these guys to come up here, because a lot of what they do is such behind-the-scenes. I mean, we are great at breaking stuff, and Daniel's all the time fixing it. Your solid waste, it just disappears that morning, you know, doing water treatment, wastewater treatment, like you said, Christmas, Christmas Eve, 365, these guys are doing that behind the scenes, as well as Steve doing all the designs for us so we can implement these beautiful creations like downtown. So, thank you so much for your kind words from everybody. Appreciate the support you've given us, and thank you enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before they go, Barbara, these guys made us look nice, didn't they? I mean, this is a photographic moment, so thank you. Thank you so much.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
We appreciate everything.
Just a short story about Josh.
Thank you for all you did.
I recall when I got my first principalship, my only principalship, I had a little problem, and as I was walking back to the office, I said, well, this is one of those I'd give to the principal. And I stopped and thought, I'm the principal. So I've got to take care of it. When Josh was here just a few days, maybe a week or two, we had a pretty rough situation. And I wasn't worried about Josh, because I had conversations with him, I knew what he was doing, but he handled it just like he had been here for 30 years, and he's been working for the City of Reevesville that same way ever since that day. A lot of the things that these guys do, you don't see, but they make the City of Reevesville comfortable for you. You see it when it snows and things of that nature, but a lot of the stuff they do, they do behind the scenes. You don't even notice. So they deserve a real big round of applause. I tease Josh about being in the principal's office every time I see him up here. Next item on the agenda, approval of the consent agenda. Would anyone like to have one go down? If not, I'll take a motion. Someone?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor raise your right hand. Item number six, public hearings. First public hearing, consideration of option one as the Reevesville City Council's preferred option regarding redistricting of the city's two electoral districts. Enclosure one, Adam Mitchell, Tharington Smith, and Bill Gilkins, Gilkins, uh, Gilchrist.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and manager of order. Adam Mitchell and Tharington Smith, good to see you here again today. I'm gonna just give a very brief recap as far as where we've been, and then turn it back over to the mayor to open up the public hearing, to give any member of the community a chance to address you all regarding the redistricting plan, then close the public hearing, and if you're prepared to then vote your preferred plan, you have the documents prepared to do so, and if not, that's fine as well. So, redistricting is based on the constitutional principle of one person, one vote, and that means that when we elect people by districts, the district should be about the same as far as the size, so that the relative voting strength of each voter is about the same. For local governments like cities, like counties, like school boards, the acceptable deviation is plus or minus 5% from the ideal district population. And to get the ideal district population, you take the total population of a city divided by the number of districts, which in your case is two, and then we look to see if our districts that we drew last time are within that plus or minus 5% range. When we did that here, we determined that you were actually just outside of that range. I think it was about 6.5% deviation each way, and so we concluded that we needed to redistrict to get within that acceptable deviation. We came back to a special meeting last month before your regular meeting and presented three alternatives. We talked through the benefits and the drawbacks, if you will, of each, and then you all had a discussion, and you came to a preliminary consensus that option one was the preferred plan of the council. That is the plan that had the least change, very minimal change, from your current plan, and you asked your staff to make the maps available. There was information available on the website. It was an interactive map that we published that allows you to zoom in and search for individual addresses to see where they fall on the plan, and again, there's very, very little change between your current plan and option number one. So if there are no questions, I will take my seat, and again, turn back to the mayor to see if any members of the public wish to address you, and if there are no questions, at the close of the public hearing, I'll come back up and we'll finish up the process.
We have any questions at this point? We'll open the public hearing at 6:28. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for the redistricting proposal? Anyone who'd like to speak against? Seeing none? We'll close the public hearing at 6:28.
So, in your materials, we prepared a resolution for your consideration, and that resolution lays out the process, and it contains a very detailed description of each census block, which district each census block is assigned to. There's also a map of the proposed option one, and if you all vote to approve that, we will export the electronic data to your Board of Elections so that they can upload that into their system so that you can, so that the new plan can be used in your upcoming election. So if there are no further questions, then I would say Mayor Gorham that- that a motion would be in order that you are prepared to adopt option one at the close of your redistricting process.
Any questions? Do we have a motion for the adoption of option one?
Make a motion there that we will adopt the option one of the redistricting.
We have a second.
I said we have a motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Let's announce.
Well, thank you. It was a pleasure working with you. And, uh, if I'm still doing this again, maybe I'll see you again.
Next item on the agenda. Consideration of a text amendment requested to amend Article 5, Section 2, Table of Permitted Uses and Notes to the Table of Permitted Uses to allow alcohol establishments in the central business district. T 2023-01, enclosure two, Jason Hart.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. Staff is petitioning to amend Article 5, Section 2, Table of Permitted Uses of the reasonable zoning ordinance to add alcohol establishments as a permitted use in the central business district. Staff is also petitioning to add Article 5, Section 2, Notes to the Table of Permitted Uses, Note 41, Alcohol Establishments with the following standards. A, no establishment shall be located closer than 50 feet from the primary entrance to any religious establishment and 500 feet from any school or public park. B, the primary entrance of an alcohol establishment, excuse me, shall not be oriented toward an abutting or adjacent lot in a residential district. Under the current table of permitted uses, bars and taverns are only allowable under clubs and places of entertainment commercial. Uh, this use incurs stringent regulations with a considerable distance requirement of 1,000 feet from any property that is zoned for residential use. By adding alcohol establishments as a permitted use, this will allow bars and taverns with less stringent regulations to open in the central business district. The planning staff researched various cities across the Piedmont Triad area, and it was found that the general requirement for alcohol establishments is 50 feet from the primary entrance of religious assemblies and 500 feet from schools and public parks. That would not include Market Square. Market Square, we would interpret as a venue that came of a planning board. The proposed permitted use is consistent with the land development plan under both goal number one, a thriving downtown, which is satisfied by working to attract more businesses to the downtown area. And goal number two, a strong local economy, is also met by seeking to bring in more businesses to the city and working to generate further interest in Reedsville as a whole. The planning staff recommend adoption of the proposed amendment, and the planning board recommended the amendment be approved with a vote of four to. I would like to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
I do. Thank you, sir. Um, when we talk about a public park, does that exclude our pocket parks downtown?
Yes, so the intent, the, the way that I would interpret that is that it would be places where children would be congregating. Playgrounds, Skies the Limit might be in there because that would be a place where children would congregate. But that's well far away from most of downtown. It's over the furthest portion of the central business district, which currently there's nothing operating there. There's just vacant lots just across, past Moorhead. If you take a left on Moorhead down here, that little vacant area down there is central business. There's nothing there right now, so. But, uh, no, with pocket parking, those it would just be playgrounds and, uh, places where children would be congregating.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Public hearing will open at 6:34. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for the amendment? Give us your name and address.
Uh, my name is Perry Savas. We live 6007 Country Club Drive. Um, my wife and I moved to Reedsville last January from Greensboro. And, uh, we were met with a few, you know, questions like, "We moved here, like, we moved here in Porpoise." Like, we love it here. Uh, we bought some property out, um, near Monroton and we also, we also live here downtown. But I'm a licensed general contractor by day. We've also been working closely with Jason on some of the properties that we are subdivided to build starter homes on to help further Reedsville's community. I'd like to pass out. Sometimes it seems things kind of just happen, you know, for a reason. Um, my wife and I are entrepreneurs by heart and we love to serve and give back to our community. And moving to Reedsville, we've seen the need and we've read, you know, the land development plan and everything. There's a need for entertainment, things to do, venues, families, you know, somewhere for families to go. We have, you know, Lucky City Brewing over here. We have a couple of other things. We belong to the Country Club, which is also great. But we have, uh, we're currently in the process of buying 240 South Scale Street, uh, which is our old laundromat, dry cleaners down there. And our vision, um, is to open a tap house in there and pay homage to the laundromats that have been there since the 20s, since, uh, the building was built. And we would like to call it Dirty Laundry Tap House. Uh, we're currently, we're currently working on finalizing all our SBA loans. Um, we're, we're going to outfit the building, um, somewhere in the neighborhood of $250,000. Um, we have grand plans and a grand idea, as you can see in kind of our inspiration pictures here. Um, and we did not know that alcohol buildings were not permitted downtown prior. Um, you know, I guess we should have looked that up. But we met with, uh, we met with Summer and we met with some of the other members. Um, we had an overwhelming positive response and we're very excited to hopefully get through this part of it and open this building and really maybe be, you know, kind of kick off the start of the first of revitalization of downtown. And we see the need and we're excited. And a lot of other younger families are excited, uh, with us that we've told about this venture. And we're, we're excited to be part of, you know, the Rocket Reedsville and, and all the stuff going on. So, uh, we, we hope that you would see this as a positive thing. Um, it'll be, you know, more of an upscale venue. Like I said, we're going to spend a quarter million dollars on this so it's not going to just be, you know, slap some paint on the walls and roll it up and say, "Here we go," you know. There's a purpose behind it. Um, and, you know, in the future, if we can, if we're able to, I graduated culinary school. Um, and I do that sometimes as well on the side of building houses. But, um, you know, the possibilities here, I think, we are, we think are endless. And, you know, the future, if we can find a restaurant, open up a restaurant, just help revitalize Reedsville, really. We put our roots down here and we're excited and we're here to stay. And we'd like to be, become an integral part of the community and kind of kick things off downtown. Uh, S-A-V-A-S.
Well, I'll tell you that I envision downtown Reedsville looking similar to what we see on Elm Street.
Yep. Hustle and bustle a lot. We went to, uh, we went downtown this weekend to kind of scope out and, you know, check out those couple of breweries that opened up down there. And, uh, it would be amazing. There were so many families, just everyone down there was having a great time. We could really do that here. And being across the street from, uh, Market Square, I think that, that's really awesome too. We can kind of just play off each other and really kick it off downtown. Thank you.
What's the timeline talking about?
Um, we're working with the, with the SBA right now, so that's, I don't know, could be, you know, 30 more days, 60 more days. Um, but as soon as we get, as soon as we get that money in hand, you know, we'd like to start and work with Jason and whoever else we need to work with, make sure all our zoning is compliant, ADA stuff. Being a general contractor, I'm familiar with most all our codes so we can do a lot of the work in-house, kind of cut that timeline in half as well, so. As soon as you can. I mean, we'd like to do 2023. Um, I can't promise fall or any, I, I don't know, but, um, we're still waiting on our Phase One environmental report to come back that that should be clean. There was no major incidents there, so. Got that one knocked off the list, so we'll just keep going.
And I just want to make a comment. I was fortunate enough to see your business plan before tonight. Um, it is awesome. So it's nice to see the man behind the plan. Did you wipe up you with this?
She did, yes.
Good.
She does all the designing, she does all that.
Wonderful.
I just filled it in rather, that's it.
So thank her too. And, uh, thank you so much for coming to Reedsville. This looks very, uh, it's very exciting.
You're welcome. We're excited. We wanted to come to a place where we knew our children could, you know, grow up right. Thank you.
So anyone else who'd like to speak for? Anyone who'd like to speak against? Seeing none? We'll close the public hearing at 6:40. City Council, what's your favor of, uh, the amendment?
Mayor? Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we approve text amendment T 2023-01.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Anonymous. Next item on the agenda, consideration of a text amendment request to amend Article 5, Section 2, Table of Permitted Uses and Notes to the Table of Permitted Uses to allow, uh, alcohol establishments as a, uh, accessory use in the central business, general business district. Enclosure three, Jason, you might as well stay up there.
I wouldn't disagree with that. Thank you again, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. Staff is petitioning to amend Article 5, Section 2, Table of Permitted Uses of the reasonable zoning ordinance to add alcohol establishments as an accessory use permitted in the central business and general business districts. Staff is also petitioning to add Article 5, Section 2, Notes to the Table of Permitted Uses, Note 42, Alcohol Establishments accessory use with the following standards. The establishment must hold an ABC permit issued by the state in order to serve alcohol. This use is only permitted in the central business and general business districts. The primary use stated on the zoning compliance permit shall meet the definition of a commercial use, but may not be a bar, microbrewery, club, or other place of entertainment. Uh, primary uses must be those, uh, approved in the central business district or the general business districts. Uh, the primary use must represent 80% of the space in use and the square footage. The bar or seating area designated must be clearly secondary to the primary use during open hours. And if the, if the primary use becomes secondary to the alcohol establishment, uh, then it must meet the regulations for alcohol establishments. What that means is, so if it's in the general business district or either one, and accessory use of the alcohol establishment becomes dominant of the majority of the business, then it has to meet the regulations for alcohol establishments as a principal use, the one that we just, just talked about. So what, what this is basically is, let's say I own a bookstore and you want to have like a wine in shop, it's really popular right now, or retail in general, and you wanted to have like a wine bar, something like that. Uh, you can have that small, you know, bar in your establishment and people could come in and buy wine or whatever they want to in the shop and, or, you know, whatever the establishment is, it has to be commercial. And, uh, so this would not be for something, uh, like a restaurant. Like, a restaurant would be different. That would be a meat and food sale and that sort of thing. It would have to, this would typically apply to something like retail mostly, I would, I would think. Uh, so, uh, this new permitted use will allow current businesses and future businesses an option to bring additional revenue and possibly generate new interest in downtown and surrounding business area. Uh, this new permitted use is consistent with the reasonable land development plan under both goal number one, a thriving downtown by bringing more businesses into the downtown and more options for businesses and activity in the community. And it satisfies goal number two, a strong local economy by bringing more businesses to the general area and to the city as a whole and generating more economic impact. Uh, the planning staff recommend adoption of the proposed text amendment and the planning board recommended the amendment be approved with a vote of five to one.
Any questions? Any questions at this? Thank you. The public hearing will open up at 6:45. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for the accessory use of alcohol in central business and general business? Name and address.
Demetrius Hope, uh, 397 Johnson, Reedsville. I wasn't prepared to get up there to speak, but I felt like it spread a rainbow. And I'm pretty sure I've, um, worried Jason death between emails and phone calls. I spoke to several of you about this. So I am the owner of 91 St. Wee Smokes and Cigar Lounge, based out of Reedsville. Been in business now for over a year. Uh, business is outstanding. Um, me and my wife, we started a mobile bar because of COVID. There's a lot of people that smoke cigars. When COVID hit, people didn't go to cigar lounges. So we said, "Let's take it to them." They have corporate events, birthday parties, retirement events, things of that nature. We started a business and it just took off from there. Um, we're now at a stage where we can open up a lounge and we would love to open up a cigar lounge here in Reedsville. Um, as you know, part of cigar lounges, somebody's going to want to burp and go with it. That's just part, it's a combination. But, um, if you've ever been to a cigar lounge, it's not, it's not a club, it's not a mic club. People don't go to a cigar lounge to get drunk. You never know who you're going to meet at a cigar lounge. I went to, uh, I had a party, a dinner party this weekend. And, um, I work at Innoor Products, I'm supervisor there. And I was talking to this gentleman from South Africa and he was like, he said, "Where are you working?" I told him, he said, "Yeah, I know him, um, Bruce Park is the owner." I said, "Yes." He said, "I'm his accountant." Well, Bruce just sold our company for $375 million. So I'm having a dinner, I'm having a dinner party with a guy that watches a millionaire's money. And I've been to several places and met different people and culture. It's just an adult, laid back vibe where you can get off work, you can have a troubled day, go sit back, smoke a cigar, and just relax. And all that stress and anxiety just rolls off. And that's what I'm trying to bring to Reedsville. So I appreciate y'all's time and I'm here for this service.
I just have a comment.
Question, comment.
Mr. Hope, I'm quite jealous because I just think this is a brilliant idea and you're, you're the kind of entrepreneur we need in downtown Reedsville. And, um, thank you so much for your efforts and, and commitment to Reedsville.
Thank you. You're welcome. Been to Reedsville my whole life. Born and bred, class 91. What's the state, I think, what's the, hey, SU? It's me. It's you.
I have a question. Have you looked at a location, have you found a location yet?
Yes, I've been talking with, um, Chuck Fan. Um, this location is Jake's Burger, it used to be Jake's Burger Bar. Yeah, so at least the perfect location. Has outdoor area, um, the inside area, um, places for me to put the hemidogs, it's, it's parking. It's, I think it's a perfect location. Um, the financing is coming from my pockets. Uh, my wife, my father, um, things like that.
I would add to that. I wish you well, but I won't be smoking cigars. I hope you do well.
Uh, thank you, thank you. Also, um, Lucky, at the brewery, I'm, I'm there all the time. Um, they constantly call me to come up there. Uh, I think the Reedsville Lucky's baseball team, they just acquired for me to start helping them with the baseball things. So, just, I'm down for Reedsville.
And you would have been like fourth last year.
I was, I was. Be there again this year.
And of course, you know I'm going to make a comment. I've been knowing this though for years. Outstanding person. Outstanding person.
Would you be bringing cigars from other areas?
Fuck, what, you bringing cigars? What do you mean, like, bringing cigars?
Cigars from Cuba.
So you can't really say, "I'm Cuban." But there's a lot. So you can't really say Cuban cigars, but there's a lot of invitation to Cuba cigars out there, Doc. Thank y'all for the time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for? Anyone who'd like to speak against? We'll close the public hearing at six fifty. Mr. Hope mentioned the class of ninety-one. I'd just like to remind him that the class of seventy-one was the best class to go grab. Counsel, what is your pleasure with accessory use of alcohol? Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve text number T two zero two three dash zero two.
We got a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. What's your unanimous? Next item, consideration of text amendment request to amend Article five, section two, Table of Permitted Uses to reduce required food sales percentage for restaurants from sixty to thirty percent. T twenty twenty-three dash three, in closing, four. Jason.
Thank you again. Staff is petitioning to amend Article five, section two, Table of Permitted Uses of reasonable zoning ordinance to remove, to reduce, excuse me, the percentage of sales in food products for restaurants from sixty percent to thirty percent. The first proposed text change is two parts. Is to reduce the food sales percentage for a restaurant, including all eating places except drive-in. Sixty percent of sales must be in food products from sixty percent to thirty percent. That's one permitted use. And the second one is a restaurant, including all eating places except drive-in. Sixty percent of sales must be in food products with accessory uses, and reducing that sales percentage from sixty percent to thirty percent. The purpose of the request is to bring reasonable zoning ordinance into alignment with the newly adopted regulations from the FDA that were adopted by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. I think that was back in like twenty eighteen. Not super recent, but fairly recent. The FDA food code was adopted, oh yeah, actually it was effective October the first, twenty twenty-one. I got ahead of myself there. With the updated percentage of food sales for restaurants as thirty, at thirty percent. So they just have to sell thirty percent in food to be considered a restaurant. And then they can serve alcohol at a restaurant, where they'll be permitted to ABC in that manner. This request aligns with the reasonable land development plan, goal number one, thriving downtown by providing less restrictions on food establishments in an effort to spur increased interest in bringing restaurants downtown. And the proposal aligns with goal number two, a strong local economy, by being less stringent in the requirements for establishments to be considered a restaurant and the city as a whole and all the districts that they are permitted in. The proposed amendment aligns both with the reasonable land development plan and updated state law. So we're meeting the state requirement. We're not making it more restrictive. The planning staff recommended adoption of the proposed text amendment, and the planning board recommended the amendment be approved with a vote of four to two.
Any questions? Any questions, Judge?
I have a question, just, just a matter of fact.
Yes, sir.
It does not pertain to drive-in restaurants, of course, but what, is there a percentage for drive-in restaurants? I know this does not address that, but I'm.
I don't believe so. I believe the only ones, the only ones that we have are.
That's why I'm asking, really.
Yeah, I don't believe we have one for the drive-in ones. It's just for the, without drive-in.
I know it doesn't address that, but I just wonder if there was a percentage, it's even legal to do it as drive-in, but.
I believe it's just, it's just this one with, and this one, the accessory uses, is the only ones that we had actual percentages on. If there was another one, then it would just follow the state law.
And that, would that include food trucks like at a festival?
Food trucks are a separate permitted use. Mobile food vendors are, they're their own permitted use. So this only applies to restaurants like, like a brick and mortar restaurant that you would open, or one with accessory uses. They're, they're two separate permitted uses, and then mobile food vendors is their own, so they follow whatever the regulations are for mobile food vendors.
One other question. How is the sixty thirty enforced? Who enforces that?
It's a zoning regulation.
Who determines whether to meet that criteria of sixty?
It's at the time of permitting. We ask them to certify that they're going to be, they would have sixty percent in food sales. They would have to put on their zoning permit application. So we would just ask them to do that, and it's zoning regulations, it's in the ordinance, so we would be charged with enforcement, enforcing that.
So does ABC Board at all have any influence in that?
I'm not sure what ALE and ABC would have with a.
Mayor Council, I mean, I'm sure ALE would probably be involved if there was a complaint or anything, but what percentage?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm sure they're the enforcement wing of ABC, so ABC I think does enforcement, ABC does it.
Any other questions? Thank you. Public meeting, or public hearing opens at six fifty-six. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for? T twenty twenty-three dash zero three. Seeing none. Is there anyone who'd like to speak against? Public hearing will close at six fifty-seven.
Before you call the judge, may I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I think I've answered my own question. If we receive a complaint that does not meet the sixty thirty, I think what we would probably do, staff would probably do is contact ALE, and then that would result in investigation.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
We have a motion for T twenty twenty-three dash zero three.
Subdued.
We have a motion and a cert. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next on the agenda, consideration of a text amendment request to amend Article five, section two, Table of Permitted Uses and Article five, section three, special uses to repeal the special use permit required for restaurants with accessory use. T twenty twenty-three dash oh four, in closing, five. Jason.
I hope you didn't miss me. Staff is petitioning to amend Article five, section two, Table of Permitted Uses and Article five, section three, special uses of the reasonable zoning ordinance to repeal the special use permit requirement for restaurants with accessory use in the central business, general business, and highway business districts. Special use permit requirements for restaurants with accessory uses are currently defined as no more than three pool tables, no more than two foosball tables, and no more than three electronic arcade games excluding sweepstakes and/or gambling games. And that's outdated because, you know, that was all state outlawed that, so. Accessory use allowable percentages limit the floor space that may be used for any combination of accessory uses to no more than twenty-five percent. So this would, this permitted use to me, the coaches was the last one that we had to get a special use permit like this. It's like a sports bar, where they're going to have pool tables, foosball, those sorts of businesses. So currently, restaurants with accessory uses must obtain a special use permit and meet the standards that I just listed previously in order to open in the city of Reesville. And this permitted use includes restaurants with games and foosball tables, and it limits the percentage of the forest places, floor space that they can use for those. So the proposed appeal of the special use permit for restaurants with accessory uses is consistent with the reasonable land development plan under goal number one, thriving downtown, and goal number two, a strong local economy by working to attract more businesses to the downtown area while simultaneously encouraging the development of a robust social entertainment center. And goal number two is also met by working to bring more businesses to the city, cut some red tape, which could be an deterrent for these businesses. When they see a special use permit, a lot of times it's kind of throws up the red flags, and sometimes it can, because they think, oh, that's more that I have to do to open the business. So the planning staff recommended adoption of the proposed amendment, and the planning board recommended the proposed amendment be approved with a vote of five to one.
Any questions, Judge?
Mayor Council, I'd like to just make one point real quick. Mr. Arden here would come out. This one looks at, you know, one thing we've noticed is if there was ever a desire for an arcade to open downtown, similar to what you see in Greensboro with Cox Car. We've had interest in the Danable Market with some arcades interested here. So this particular repeal would allow those type of establishments to be able to have that.
It would be by right. They wouldn't need a special use permit, no.
So it would be by right. They do not need the special use permit, but then are they limited to those number of games?
No, ma'am. No, this repeals that whole regulation. It's just by right. There's going to be added to it. No additional regulation. It's just.
Thank you.
Seems like we're helping ourselves.
Thank you.
It's gonna be fun.
Public hearing opens at seven oh one. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for? T twenty twenty-three dash four oh four. Seeing none. Is there anyone who'd like to speak against? We'll close the public hearing at seven oh two. What is the pleasure of counsel?
Subdued.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. What's your unanimous?
Ma'am, may I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
With all these changes to this we're making tonight, I may decide to come to the council meeting a couple hours early. Come downtown.
Yeah, yeah. It's looking more and more like Elm Street to me. Next item on the agenda, consideration of a text amendment request to amend Article two, section one, definitions, Article five, section two, Table of Permitted Uses, and Notes to the Table of Permitted Uses to define the terms mobile food vendor, motorized and mobile food vendor, push carts, and amend Notes thirty-nine forty, applicable to mobile food vendors. T twenty twenty-three dash oh five. Jason.
Thank you. Thank you again. Staff is petitioning to amend Article two, section one, definitions, and Article five, section two, Table of Permitted Uses, Notes to the Table of Permitted Uses of the reasonable zoning ordinance to change food trucks and push carts to mobile food vendor motorized and mobile food vendor push cart, noted as permitted uses in the Table of Permitted Uses. There's three phases to this text amendment. This should sound familiar because I told you last month that we would have a text amendment coming to align the zoning ordinance with the code. So council made changes, I made changes to the code last month. So this just brings the zoning into alignment with what's in the code now. So we were repealing those regulations that are in there because it's all in the code now. So all that we're leaving in there are just a few things. So this is redefining these permitted uses as mobile food vendor motorized, a person utilizing a motorized vehicle or trailer operating for the purpose of preparing food and or selling food to the general public and is to be readily moved. And mobile food vendor push cart is any non-motorized piece of equipment from which a vendor prepares and or sells food to the general public. Food push carts, and these are the regulations that we are leaving in here. Food push carts are limited to forty-five inches in width, seventy-two inches in length, and sixty inches in height. That is consistent with code ordinances, remember, that y'all passed last month. Campies slash umbrellas must be a minimum of seventy-eight inches from the ground at the lowest point, and food push carts shall not be motorized or propelled in any manner other than the walking motion of the person operating the push cart. And the phase two is to amend Article five, section two, Table of Permitted Uses. So as I said, rename food trucks to mobile food vendor motorized, and rename push carts to food push cart, or to mobile food vendor push cart, excuse me. And so I realized we didn't have definitions for these permitted uses, so we're adding definitions. We're changing the names of them only. It's still basically food, commonly called food trucks and push carts. And then the third phase is to amend Notes thirty-nine and forty of the notes of the Table of Permitted Uses in Article five, section two. So the, the planning board, or excuse me, the council approved an amendment codifying regulations last month. Therefore, regulations found in the code overrule those in the zoning ordinance. Therefore, we're proposing to repeal those existing regulations that you can see in your agenda packets. It's basically just moving those over to the code. And this request aligns with the reasonable land and development plan, goal number one, thriving downtown, by increasing the variety of potential mobile food vendor events in downtown. And goal number two is achieved by bringing in more restaurant options and dining options to the city. The planning staff recommended the proposed amendment be approved, and the planning board unanimously recommended the amendment be approved. And also, one more thing I realized, those in the notes, we didn't leave in a provision for a mobile food vendor motorized to have a sandwich board sign located immediately outside the vehicle. Right now, they can only have what's allowed, or what's attached to the food truck. But we have had some asked about, they like the sandwich board signs. So they are allowed one sandwich board sign, and it has to be in alignment with the ordinance requirements for sandwich board signs, and it has to be located immediately outside the vehicle. It can't obstruct a parking space or a a drive-through or any kind of ingress or egress pathway. So that is one thing that is remaining in the, in the note for mobile food vendor motorized.
Any questions, Judge? Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
The public hearing will open up at seven oh seven. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for? T twenty twenty-three dash oh five. Seeing none. Is there anyone who would like to speak against? Public hearing will close at seven oh eight. What's the pleasure of counsel?
I make a motion that we approve text amendment T two zero two three dash zero five.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next item, consideration of proposed revisions of the city of Reesville storage response plan. The approval of the plan at the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, City Council, following the receipt of any public comments.
All right, Jackson.
Good evening, everyone. Every five years, we have to renew our water source plan, response plan. What we have before you in your packet is what we're proposing. It is open for public comments for thirty days. The ad hoc went out in April. To date, Lake Drive might receive any comments, but we'll open the floor up for comments here in a minute. In your packet, I did include this chart, so I'll go over two things. The, the response plan is kind of twofold. One, what we do is we take your average consumption over the last three years, and that becomes your baseline. So as we move through the various phases, if your consumption does not decrease per that phase, or twenty, twenty-five, forty percent as we go through the phases, then there is an additional excess consumption charge. We're not planning any changes to that. What we are here tonight to present changes is really a text amendment to the language. to the language, uh, the previous ordinance mentions the REIT for review, which is now the lock-in camp now. So, we want to update that to reflect those changes, as well as mentioned code grid that we also use in these situations. Beyond those two, the, the only changes is the modifications to the fees, uh, in this proposed chart. This ordinance was last modified in 2019, so it's a little out of date. And if you look at some of the current, uh, offenses within this, you can see like stage five, they're only $100 to $200 for residents. We felt like that was really insufficient to get somebody's attention. If we're in a phase five situation, that's the most severe. Uh, and we just felt like that wasn't ample enough to, to stop someone. To give you an example, an offense would be if, if we, the public works drove by and said summer was washing her car in a phase five. That would be an example of a violation. You go to a restaurant, you don't order water, but they present you water before they offer or ask you a drink. Those are kind of some quick examples. Water in your yard during the day is another kind of similar example. So, that's what these, uh, uh, penalties would, would be against if someone noticed you deliberately going against what was restricted during that particular stage. On behalf of to answer any questions you have, like I said, it is open for public comment, and, uh, we will take all those that we received and then present this to you again.
Any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, how many times have we ever been at stage five?
We've not enacted this. We are very fortunate with Lake Reitful. Of course, we also have Lakeview as a backup. Uh, but to my knowledge, we have not had to do this.
And if we had to, would it be complaint driven?
Uh, no, the ordinance is very clear that we monitor the amount of days of water we have. Uh, it's enacted through me to, to summer. Um, so we monitor the number of days of water, the current weather conditions, forecast, stream flow, a number of parameters that would then help us allocate how many days of water supply that we have left. That then determines what stage we need to go to, and obviously, the fewer days of water supply, the we get closer to that phase five.
Do you have a question? It's open for public comments at 7:12. Anyone who'd like to make a comment about the new revisions of the plan for water shortage response? It won't be long. Seeing none, we'll close public comments at 7:13. We'll take care of this situation in June then. Next on the agenda, consideration of an amendment to Chapter 4 Buildings, Construction and Related Activities, Article 3 Swimming Pools, Section 4 dash 55, a numberation of specifics construction requirements to clarify regulations regarding fencing of swimming pools, enclosure 8. Jason, all.
Thanks again, Mayor Councilman Manager. Staff is petitioning to clarify regulations regarding fencing of swimming pools found in the city of reasonable code ordinances of the existing language in the code regarding fencing requirements states that all swimming pools to be constructed or which are already constructed shall be enclosed by a fence which shall be at least four feet in height and which shall be of a type not readily climbable by children. Uh, there is no distinction made for above-ground swimming pools as the ordinance's definition of swimming pools is as follows. A swimming pool means any artificially constructed portable or non-portable pool capable of being used for swimming or bathing, which has a depth of two feet or more at any point. Therefore, allowing no room for discrepancy on above-ground swimming pools, which are usually temporary in nature. The North Carolina State Building Code is less restrictive than the wording found in the, in the ordinance and allows for above-ground pools to be unfenced when the wall is of a height above 40, uh, 48 inches or above, and has a ladder with a locking cover, or the owner may remove the ladder when not using it and securing it and secure it elsewhere in an approved manner. That means when they're done using the pool, they can take the ladder away, lock it up somewhere, attach it somewhere, so no one can climb it. Many people purchase these temporary swimming pools during the summer and, uh, do not have a fence in the backyard. That's kind of the reason behind buying a Coleman swimming pool. It won't work, you know? You're not really going to intend to put up a, a fence around it. Uh, so, the intent of making this distinction is, in, in the ordinance is to allow for above-ground swimming pools which meet the minimum, minimum requirements of the state building code and clarify our fencing requirements. And I recommend that the proposed amendment be approved.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Okay, at what point does the state recognize an above-ground pool that becomes an in-ground pool when a deck has been built around it?
If there's a deck around it, it would still, it would still be above ground. It's just the deck is suspended too. So, it would, I would think, you know, I'm not building inspector, so that's a disclaimer here. Uh, take that for what it's worth. To me, I would think that it would be when it becomes like in the ground, it is not above ground, even if there's a deck around it, it would still be considered above ground. I would think.
Even though the depth is over two feet?
I'm not familiar with that. I would need one of our inspectors here to answer that question. I'm, I'm, I'm just a planner. But, uh, yeah, I conversed with them, and I showed them this amendment. I showed it to Neil, and we talked about it. And, uh, and he supports this amendment too, so, uh, so we have him signing off on it as well.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, no problem. Yes, ma'am.
And, and a mighty fine planner you are, and this one might go to inspectors, but do you consider a chain-linked fence climbable by children? For those of us who have had children?
That would be an inspector's call when they, when they observed it, and I'm not sure what their interpretation would be of, of that. I can't, I wouldn't even want to speculate on myself, but I would be glad to be to answer on it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay, and Jason?
Thank you.
What's your pleasure on consideration of amendment to Chapter 4 Buildings, Construction and Related Activities to Swimming Pools? Some move? We have a motion and a second in the discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. Next item, consideration of projects proposed for addition to the 2026, 2035 State Transportation Improvement Program, STIP. Enclosure nine, Jason, all. Josh Beck.
One more thing, and then I'll be out of your way. Thankfully, Josh is here, so look at him too. Uh, so, this is a lengthy topic, so just bear with me and we'll get through it. Uh, so, in, in June, not July, I apologize for that typo in the middle. Uh, this is actually in June. Uh, the Technical Advisory Committee, the TAC, there's going to be a lot of acronyms flying in at you because it's transportation planning. Uh, through the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, PTRC, will vote to determine what projects on the current list will be added to the upcoming or what they will recommend, is the better language. DOT doesn't have to approve what they recommend that they take into account. That's what it was told to me. Uh, will be recommended to be added to the 2026, 2035 State Transportation Improvement Program. STIP is the acronym for that. Uh, we are requesting council feedback on the existing projects the city submitted around 2019 roughly. I think it was right before the pandemic sometime, and they didn't do prioritization, uh, back in 2020. Uh, so they skipped it because of the pandemic. And so, the 2024 just got added to that, and I'll get to that in just a second. Uh, just some background information on, uh, the STIP. Uh, the STIP is the North Carolina Department of Transportation, NC DOT. A 10-year schedule for projects is updated every two years through a process called prioritization. Uh, I've attached a breakdown and a map of the projects that are proposed for the 2024, 2033 STIP. So, there's two parts of this. This is the 2024 portion. This is actually at DOT right now. It's already been voted on by the TAC and already prioritizing. It's basically sitting at DOT waiting on approval right now. Uh, but we, this is more of an update than a, a, a feedback, just to kind of tell you what's going on. Uh, these are the projects on the current STIP. This is the most recent one. And, uh, these are the ones that are around the city limits, uh, the closest to us, and are prioritized for funding over the next six years. So, the way the STIP works, the ones that get onto the STIP are prioritized for funding within six years, even though it covers around 10 years. The ones that do not receive, uh, funding for the first six years that are on the STIP go into the carryover through the RPO, and I'll get to that in just a second. So, that's how it comes in from the STIP projects, which are, they're going to get funded. But then, the ones that are funded by the carryover, those come from the RPO list, which I'll get to in just a second. I said there was a lot here. Uh, of the projects that are on the 2024 STIP are waiting for DOT approval are NC DOT, um, improvements to NC 65 slash NC 87 west of SR 2371 Old County Home Road in Wentworth to US 158 slash US 29 Business Freeway Drive. That's the intersection, the way you go to Wentworth, uh, you go to Wentworth that way. So, it's the intersection at Freeway Drive that is requiring some utility location, relocation, excuse me, that's where, gosh, it is departmental. So, uh, so that, that's the first project they have prioritized, and that is ongoing. There's already a concept plan out there for that. And then the second one is to upgrade, uh, US 29 to interstate standards. Uh, this is from the High Cone, the Urban Loop, as we call it, uh, uh, 2158 to that intersection with 29. And then, third one is the widening of Freeway Drive. Hard to believe that this is still on the STIP, and DOT is still closing that project out. And I think Josh refined that out under the state for me. So, the prioritization process takes input from the TAC, whose voting members, Councilman Festerman, he's our representative on the TAC. I'm the staff representative on the TCC. So, I'm on the staff committee, and, uh, Councilman Festerman votes, uh, to prioritize these projects for us. So, the projects that score the highest and the TAC vote are given the highest priority, and we can decide at our points. And, uh, I'm not sure exactly how many points we're going to have to allocate, but we get to choose how many we allocate towards these projects that I'm about to list out in just a second. Uh, so, the recommended projects from the RPO must then be approved by the NC DOT Transportation Board, and DOT takes the recommended order into account. And then I already mentioned that they receive priority funding for the first six years. And, uh, here, here comes in with the, with the RPO, uh, with the projects that don't get onto the STIP. So, uh, the ones that don't get on the STIP go into the carryover or the holding tank. The carryover ones may get some leftover funding. The holding tank ones are basically just waiting for the next round. They're just sitting there until there's another vote on them. Uh, so, uh, the carryover projects are more like, much more likely to get funding than a holding tank project unless there was some kind of emergency reprioritization, but I don't know how often that happens. Uh, we've included a list of the projects that we recommend, uh, for the 2026 STIP, and also a map of the ones that are currently proposed. That's the one with the pink lines on them that you can see where they're currently proposed to be located across the county and the ones for the city, uh, as well. So, this is the, uh, the order that we're recommending, uh, for the projects to be prioritized. And we are recommending that two projects be added to the current list. Uh, the first one is the bicycle and pedestrian project category. Uh, this is its own, uh, project description category. Uh, the first one is Cypress Drive to construct a multi-use path from Belmont Drive to the JC Park Greenway Crossing, uh, that goes across Cypress Drive. Uh, that's a brand new one. So, we, we would be asking the, uh, the RPO to add that on. That would be considered, uh, at the vote in June. The next one, number two, is South Park Drive to construct a six-foot wide, uh, concrete sidewalk from Cypress Drive to Freeway Drive. That one's been on there for a while. And the JC Park Greenway, uh, to extend the JC Park Greenway and connect it with South Park Drive, where the sidewalk would be proposed to for the connectivity. Uh, and that's all for the, the bike and ped category. Uh, for the highway projects category, um, this is also a new one, uh, for US 29 to upgrade it to interstate standards from NC, uh, 14 slash 158 from the intersection that where it stops with the current one on the 2024, all the way to the, the Virginia State Line. Uh, no one surprisingly has suggested that yet, so we're going to be recommending that, or we would like to recommend that one would be added to the, uh, to the STIP, uh, for consideration, uh, since we all want that to see that happen, upgrade 29 to interstate standards. Uh, the next one is for US 158 to widen the existing roadway from, uh, US 220 that's over in New Stokesdale or in Gofer County, all the way to Freeway Drive. It's extensive project. They're wanting to widen, uh, the whole roadway, extend the, the shoulders of it. I'm sure Josh could explain some more of the, the technical aspects of what they would do with the widening and everything. Uh, West Harrison Street to widen the existing roadway, uh, from inter, from the intersection at Freeway Drive to South Scale Street. Uh, so this will pick up where the current one on the 2024 one leaves off. So, this will continue past that intersection at Freeway and, uh, let's see, and, and West Harrison. So, that would continue down Harrison all the way to South Scales. And that'll get rid of those concrete ditches that are there and widen the, the roadway, uh, which would very much improve it. And number four is for Richardson Drive to improve the intersection at South Main Street, Richardson Drive. I'm sure you're all very familiar with this. It's a, it's a bad intersection. Uh, so there is, there is a working plan out there, and I think, uh, and Josh could, with DOT, do you want, do you want to talk about it?
So, I put that in your guys' packet so you could take a look at that. That is conceptual. Uh, I have to make that very clear. That was part of my stipulation of being able to show that. But yeah, it's just conceptual roundabout that we're looking at. Right to work with DOT to look at, at how we could kind of modify that and add in, uh, some additional improvements in that particular project. But, but as Jason said, you know, the goal is to get on an RPO which will then carry over to the STIP. That's our ultimate goal here, because the STIP projects are going to get funded and move forward in about a 10-year time frame.
And you, and part of that is drawing support from other cities, because with our votes alone, we couldn't make, uh, make it happen. We would need support from others, and they would need more votes on it. Uh, so, uh, and then the fifth one is for US 29 Business to improve the intersection at Waterworks Road to include turn lanes. My understanding of this was it was added because people have votes, and they, to make that turn right there, they really need turn lanes to kind of make that safer at that intersection. So, so that's the order that we're recommending for prioritization, and, uh, we're asking for any input. It's been a while since a lot of these projects were added, and, uh, there, there's no requirement to take a formal vote or formal action at all. You could just give, say, you know, give us a thumbs up and leave it at that, or you can vote, whatever you want to do is, you know, it, it's great. Uh, so, I'll, we'll be glad to answer any of your questions.
Mayor Council, I may add something from sort of customer questions.
I'll make a comment. First of all, I don't think the staff can, uh, allow me to participate as a Chicago representative before you folks. Uh, and you're correct, it does not require a vote, but as Chicago representative, I would like to have a vote, Miss Council, because we enjoy what you guys are doing, and I think it might give us a little more. It's probably times, may I like to make a motion that we do take a vote on this proposal. Thank you.
And Mayor Council, the only thing I wanted to add was, um, one thing that we, as the city representatives, we've been working, the managers have throughout, uh, Rockingham County with our county manager to put all these in order. So, I know that we will be, if councils or desires to report with this proposal, we would submit this tomorrow to Rockingham County, and they will put all that together for us as well. But this would be above and beyond to show what you, the city council, would like to see.
Bicycle pedestrian projects, the South Park Drive, that would be on one side of the road or the other, just a six-foot sidewalk all the way up.
Yeah, I believe it's on the side of where, uh,
I can speak to that. So, that's just an extension of what we've already done. That's, of course, if you guys recall from some past meetings, that's in our thoroughfare plan. Uh, unfortunately, that section of South Park, once you go past the schools, is narrower than the section that we've been dealing with, and so it would require widening to do the bike lanes and a, and a sidewalk versus just restriping like we've done on that particular roadway. versus just restriping like we've done on that particular roadway.
But it says a six-foot concrete sidewalk.
Yes.
So...
It would upgrade to pedestrian bike friendly is the ultimate goal.
And the JC Park Greenway, extend the park, that's the, that runs behind the high school?
Yes. Well, the one we're adding is, what we're trying to get funding for, is what we've all looked at internally as Cypress Drive with a multi-use path. But yeah, to answer your question, that is the portion to go behind the high school.
To, like JC Park and...
To bring it around to South Park.
Thank you.
With the South Park Drive, without required by the way, I could do, we already have...
It's, it's hard to say, chief, at this time. I mean, they'd have to design and look at, you know, they're probably very similar to Cypress. There'd probably be some easements, whether they're permanent or construction easement, depending on the ultimate cross-section and how that would be. I would hate to say at this time, just, just off the cuff.
Any other questions? It was my understanding too, that we don't have to make a, like a formal vote, but I would appreciate it if we would go ahead and follow through with the motion.
Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity. I would like to propose, make a motion if we accept the recommendation that's enumerated by my staff regarding this.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. I would like to suggest that at this time, we take a five-minute break. I should call the meeting back to order please. Just on budgetary items. Consideration of contract with Sanford-Holzer and for Strategic Economic Development Action Plan and accompanying Budget Ordinance Amendment, enclosure 10. Council, well, City Manager Wood and Mac Williams, Economic Development consultant.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and we'll kind of draw this together if you would. So, as you're aware, we've been contracting with Sanford-Holzer and Holzer to start our search for our economic development director. And as you're sitting there with the firm, they asked a very valid question, you know. So they've been, it's our firm that we hired to ensure that they target the right individuals that we, as the city of Reesville, want heading up that department. What does our strategic economic development plan look like? And I must admit, I said I don't know that we have one. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention. And what you have in your agenda packet would be a proposal from Sanford-Holzer. They would do this strategic plan in conjunction with their search. And with that, I will turn over to Mr. Williams. If you want to just briefly go over what that kind of looks like, so council knows what this entails, because when you, your firm described this to me, I just thought it was something the city really needs. So, we as staff, no, the city council and your constituents want to see with economic development. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Manager, Mayor, and Counsel. I'm Mac Williams. That's my name. I'm with the firm. Manager, it's Sanford-Holzer. And we have presented to you a proposal for how we would go about doing an economic development strategic plan. But before I get to that, I want to say this. I've been here now under another contract, is doing bridge management for two months. And I've got to say, my experience here has been wonderful. The staff has been welcoming. They've been including me, inclusive of me, when I'm, when I'm only here one day a week. But, but when I am here, if I need something from staff, it doesn't matter if it's from IT, to a map, to an email, everybody has been very responsive and professional and welcoming in their demeanor. The energy here in the, in the staff, in the building, you can tell something's going on. People are excited about things that are happening in Reesville. And so I just want to say, thank you, Mayor, Man, Manager, for the welcome that I've received as just a temporary, part-time person. The person that's going to be filling Jeff's, Garth's role is gonna come into a nice situation with a bunch of good people to work with. So, I felt like I just needed to say that first before talking about what we would do. So, and it's been helpful for me to be here for these past two months, to get a better feel for what the job entails, the kind of things that come up, that that person might encounter. I was a local economic developer. I sat in the chair for most of my career. And so I understand what local developers, when the phone rings, you just don't ever know what's gonna be happening when you're over there. And so, somebody that's gonna come into this community is gonna have a different set of things than maybe I did. But we'll get a better feel for it by being in the job here for the last couple months and for a few months going on further. We are going to incorporate and overlap my bridge management with the executive search and the plan. The planning process will take about five months. We think we can do the first two of those. Our process is to get input from people that, the manager, Mr. Mayor, other staff, you all may give us, we, we need feedback on what our community should look like, and what we want to be focusing on, and what our priorities are gonna be. We're gonna have 15 individual interviews. I'm probably gonna do all of them, but not most of them, with names you guys give me. We're gonna do three focus groups as well. So small groups of five to seven people talking about retail entrepreneurship, industrial development, labor force, transportation. What are the things that Reesville wants and needs to do to position itself to be more competitive going forward? So we're gonna have discussions with all of those folks over the, over the course of the next two months. We think that part of the process is gonna help us really inform who we're gonna be looking for to fill the role going forward. Who's gonna be interacting with all of you all and all the people you're gonna be partnering with in this part, in this part of the process. So we think, we think that's gonna be a big part of making the search tighter, more narrow. And we think we can shorten the search timeline, because we'll have a much better feel for who we're looking for, because we can make the advertising more, more Reesville-specific. That's basically it. We are going to start immediately. If you approve this, the payment and everything, we can work out. Because you're right here at the beginning, at the end of one fiscal year and the beginning of the next. So we've got some flexibility for you there, if you need it. But it is going to be, we're going to, we're going to get a small leadership team to work with us. That leadership team is gonna give us names of people to interview and put in focus groups. We're gonna do that. After that, we'll do all kinds of other things to generate a report for you, probably by, I think, I think our proposal said, the end of August or September, sometime around in there. And everything will be done, hopefully, executive search, the bridge management, and the strategic plan, all being done by the end of September, first of October. And so we are going to combine, rather than doing A before B and B before C, we're already doing A. We want to combine some A and B, which is the executive search with the strategic planning process, and overlap it there, so that we can, our part of the strategic planning process can help us better inform who we're gonna be looking for in the executive search. You've got the amount there, how it's to be paid. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have about what we're planning to do or, or the process we're gonna be involved in if we go forward.
As a former coach, I see the information that I read as a strategic plan to win.
Well, you have a good team here, and I think, I think we can give you some ideas and some things to focus on. That person can focus on, that's another good thing about that plan, is that it can give the person here a real focal point to start with, something to measure them against, and not just coming in, inventing things that don't really matter to the people that are employing that person. So, that's what we're hoping to do.
I also see it as a plan where it's, when you have our high schoolers leave and go to college, they're gonna come back.
Come back.
And those who don't, for a college degree, they have something to stay home for.
Right.
So, I was very interested in that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
First of all, Mr. Williams, I appreciate some kind words toward our staff. I'm not a bit surprised you found that, that staff easy to work with. I also have to tell you that I followed your career. We've had discussions for many, many, many years. And we are truly fortunate to have your expertise. You've done some outstanding work in other areas of this state. And I know that we will benefit from your expertise and direction here as the city of Reesville. I have a question, however. I know you said, back to you, Strategic Economic Development Plan, you anticipate costing $30,500 plus expenses. Do you have some idea what kind of expenses you might be talking about? In what range, by my money, we might be talking about?
Very little, because most of it is mileage. I live in Burlington, and so, you know, I'm coming up here once a week anyway with the bridge management. While I'm here, I can do some of this strategic plan work while I'm here doing bridge management. That's the overlap. So, it's really mileage and a, and a lunch here and there. You know, I've, I've been trying out all the places around, Cafe 99, Southern, was it Southern Cafe?
Carolina.
Carolina Cafe. I went to, I went to 24 Blackbirds the last time I was here. So, I'm getting around and testing the places. Been to the barbecue places, the burger place down on Scale Street.
Peaches.
Peaches. So, yeah. So, you know, that and mileage are my expenses.
That's my, that's crazy. I thought it'd be irrelevant, but I didn't want to...
I'm taking, me and Son will be, we'll be going and whining and dining and...
We'll do that down, down.
Not very minimal, which is one of the, which is one of the benefits of overlapping it. Plus, I will tell you that because you've engaged us in the other two things, you've got a discount of fee there. We've given you a discount on the bridge management, because you combined it with the executive search. And now we're giving you, for this third engagement, a discount on the fee that we normally charge for something like this.
I'm satisfied with that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
I see a need for the Strategic Economic Development Action Plan. Do we have a motion?
Settle it.
All right, we got a motion in the session. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, Mac.
I should roll the media. Thank you, Madam.
Mayor, Council, we could be clarifications. Does that include the budget amendment? It's a fact. Yes, yes. Thank you, sir.
Next item on the agenda, consideration of bids for Lower JC Park Splashpad Project with accompanying Budget Ordinance Amendment, capital project ordinance amendment, and ARP rent, special revenues. Enclosure 11, Josh Pratt.
Good evening again. Thank you, everyone. After a pretty extensive design process, I'm excited to present some bids to you tonight. So, back in February, believe it or not, we had our pre-bid for this project. Of course, we advertised the usage rate like we normally do. It was also about the time that Judy and the penthouse project was going out. So we also sent the project to all the plan holders of that, since similar size, obviously similar location. But unfortunately, on March 28th, we only received two bids. And per state guidelines, we cannot open those bids at that time. So we gave the bid back, reposted again, and fortunately, on April 28th, the same two bidder returned to us, contracted for hard construction and serious construction. And we were able to open with two bids at the second bid opening. And opened the bid, and the lowest bidder was serious construction. As you guys may remember, they were also constructed our, our base and site work for our clock tower project that we opened back in January. So with your approval, we'd like to recommend that we accept their bid in the amount of $1.2 million, $2,068. I would also like to tell you, because I didn't include it in your packet, but the second highest bidder was about $250,000 or more. So I think serious gave us a pretty good price. Obviously, they worked really hard and fast on the clock tower project for us. They were only given about 30 days, believe it or not, to do that project. I think that turned out well. So there are no questions on the bid, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Phillips to talk about how we pay for it.
Yes, ma'am?
And this is a very, very close, local company.
Correct.
Thank you.
Good evening. As Josh said, the bid was, he's recommending below bid, $1,202. A little bit more than what we had in our project. Not surprised, hearing how the projects are coming in around, that, that it's coming in higher than expected. And this project is grown a little bit too. We want it to be, it's gonna be a large splash pad, and we want to have nice facilities for folks that visit there. And with the location, there's a, there's a pump that has to be included, part of the process. And this pump has to be able to handle when the, when the park is, basically the water's recycled, but it's flushed at some point. So, that part add a little bit to it too. So there's a little, you know, this project group, not only is it inflation, but also scope as well. So, we actually need to increase our budget by $600,000 to be able to finish this project and award the bid. So, originally, you know, this is a project we had talked about before, the American Rescue Plan funds were in existence. So we had a budget. We'd already put some money aside when we started talking about this project. And then the American Rescue Plan funds became available. So we allocated some of those dollars to the splash pad, but we never released that original money, because we anticipated we may need more money. So we, we kept $500,000 in appropriated fund balance for this project, just in case this day came. So we need $600,000. We already have $500,000 that's in the budget. And so we need another $100,000. So we're gonna recommend using about $100,000 of American Rescue Plan funds that we still have available to get the $600,000 that we need. So to do that, of course, you have to award the contract. Then there's three other pieces, budgetary items, that are necessary to be able to walk through the budget process of the dollars. So the first one's a budget ordinance amendment that just takes the $500,000 and moves it into the right account to go to the capital project. And then there's a American Rescue Plan Special Project Fund Amendment that takes the $100,000 and allocates it to this project. Then the third piece is actually on the splash pad, capital project ordinance amendment, which recognizes that $600,000 coming to it and increases construction for the $600,000 needed to finish the, finish the project. So, four things actually. You award, you award the contract, and it's three budgetary pieces. And I guess three budgetary can lead to one motion. I don't know if they need to take it separately. All three of those things really work together, but it's three separate pieces. Now that you award the contract separately from...
Any questions?
How did we get the professional services review?
It was an estimate. So, the last time we did a budget, we, we dropped in whole numbers, and that piece came in a little bit, a little bit less.
If I can go back to a previous, Mr. Beck, just for a second. What kind of timeframe are we talking about, Mr. Beck?
So, uh, unfortunately, we're, we're here at this stage, but we do not have approval to begin construction at this current moment. Where Summer will attest, we are very close. Um, but general statutes are very clear that we cannot begin construction of a pool, splash pad, or any water facility till we have the Health Department approval. I would like to say that will be in the next fifteen to thirty days, but you gotta understand, we're also dealing with, with multiple parties. Uh, the original designers of this are out of, of Canada, and so there's some lead and lag on that. I'm, I'm pushing as hard as I can. Um, but once we actually get underway, the contract ends for six months. So, you know, I, I guess I wanna be clear that don't expect to see an excavator next week on the job site. Uh, I would, as soon as I get approval, I'll certainly share that with Summer and, and pass that along. Um, but this has been a challenging project, to say the least, and I truly apologize for the length it's taken. But it's, uh, we're down to three or four comments with, uh, with the Health Department. They've been great to work with, and it's not only them, I wanna be clear in that. Um, but it's just, we deal with, with an owner's rep, and then deals with their engineers, who then has to send it back to a North Carolina engineer to get revised and, and stamped because it obviously has to be stamped by a North Carolina P E. Um, and so that causes some delays, is the best explanation I can give for it at this time.
Thank you.
We might be splashing around a little bit in these, uh...
Well, that is a good point. I mean, this, this is a facility, it's gonna be open, you know, in the summer, so we're talking Memorial Day or later day. So our opening will be Memorial Day. I mean, there's no reason that we wouldn't be opening next Memorial Day.
We could have an Eskimo club, I'd say.
We could. We'll let Council lead the way.
So we're just in a waiting game? It's nothing that we can do to speed it up? We just have to wait until...
Well, ideally, once you guys award the bid, then I can start moving forward with the contract at the same time that I'm working through these final design comments, so they're moving in tandem. So that's why we wanna go ahead and bring it forward. We don't really expect the changes to affect the price all that much. So it's not like we'll have a massive change order.
And Mayor Council, one thing that I have, I will take full responsibility for. One carrot we do have left to hold is the final payment to Vortex, who is the company holding this up. And I have to reckon staff not to issue that payment until we have got everything we needed. Thank you.
Is there a motion to award the contract?
Settle.
We have a motion in a second. End of discussion. All in favor?
I just wanna briefly comment on what Ms. Walker said. We are awarded to a Rockingham County, uh, company, so I feel a little bit about it. Thank you.
All in favor? She knows. We have a motion for the three budgetary items. Some...
Thank you.
Got a motion in a second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Thank you.
You now. Presentation of proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget for a public hearing to be held June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Manager, go.
Mayor Council, first just like to say, thank each and every opportunity we've offered to you to be able to present this year's budget to you and on behalf of the City of Greensville. I'd also like to commend all our staff, uh, our management team members to department heads on the hard work that they've put into this budget process, ensuring that all the needs of the constituents are met. Also, a special thank you to Assistant City Manager, Ayla Cloud, and his guidance in going through the budget process. And a special thank you to Assistant City Manager and Vice Director, Chris Phillips. Um, he is done a lot of the job, as always. And also, a special thank you to, uh, City Clerk, Angela Stabler, and Deputy City Clerk, Latasha Wade, for all their assistance in making sure that everything we have before we do not discontinue. So I just wanted to start that by saying thank you for the opportunity, and thank you to staff for what you do. With that, you do have your budget notebook. I have one ahead and passed around to each of you just a PowerPoint. Um, I just wanted to give you some budget highlights. Uh, if you have any questions, please let me know. We do have a possible work session if City Council would like that scheduled for later this month that we can talk about. But this would be scheduled for your June City Council meeting for a public hearing. So with that, if I can just take a few moments of your time to hit some budget highlights, and it'll be, I'll be referencing in your PowerPoint that was just handed out. The total city budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is thirty-three million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. This is an increase of five point one six percent from the current adopted fiscal year. Property taxes are recommended to stay at the current tax rate of zero point seven three nine cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation, so no property tax increase. Also, water and sewer utility rates are recommended to stay at the current rate. No increase is proposed for the, uh, current fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four that's being proposed. The only thing that is being proposed is a small fee increase in the city's fee schedule, which is in your budget notebook. It's recommended for advertising costs, the penthouse spending rental, and some fees in community development. And again, these fees are just looking to break even because we noticed in some of these line items, they were going into red because costs have went up significantly. Page two is revenue projections for General Fund. We talked about these items in our first budget work session. Sales tax is projected to increase four hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. This increase is based on current revenue projections the city's receiving in sales tax. Also, the bid when we discussed is interest income is projected to increase four hundred thousand. This increase is based on current revenue projections and the federal government increasing interest rates. As we said in our work session, this is one we should never rely on because we've all been on the other end of this when it was four thousand dollars instead of four hundred thousand. But on current revenue projections, we do see this occurring in this proposed budget. The other item to note in the revenue, it's really kind of a wash, but there was an increase in revenue in the School Resource Officer Reversal of a hundred thousand. And this increase is based on additional School Resource Officer at Mostri Elementary School. That's a reimbursement. The current year habit form taxes are projected to increase slightly, and this is based on current revenue the city's receiving. So that's not based on a tax increase. That's simply because people are paying our, uh, collection rate as well.
Hey, Mayor, Mayor, just a second.
Yes, sir.
Clarification. When you say sales tax, does that include the online sales tax that we collect, too?
Exactly.
And, and do you know off the top of your head what we can anticipate collecting in online sales taxes? Come here.
Yeah, almost, I would say, you know, it doesn't, they don't differentiate it's just sales tax. But online sales tax luckily was, uh, complete, uh, the process was completed with big vendors like Amazon in, in, uh, twenty twenty. So we've seen, that's one reason that we've seen the increases we've seen over the last few years. They all keep coming out. They, they don't give us anything to show the difference.
They don't identify what comes from online.
And, uh, at the state level, they might would, so I can try and see, uh, like times of difference.
I think that would be helpful, boys.
Can we just get one, one number?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next page is revenue projections in your Water and Wastewater Fund. Utility charge line item is projected to increase one hundred thousand. And this is due to the contractual agreement the City of Greens lies with the City of Greensboro. This increase is in their contract, and that's based on inflation near to here, so that is in their contract. The only other projection revenue increase for the Water and Wastewater Fund is interest income. Again, is projected to increase two hundred and forty thousand. And this increase, again, is based on current revenue projections and the federal government increasing interest rates. The next item we discussed at length in our budget work session was personnel. Um, I think we would all agree, and we certainly appreciate Mayor Warm and each of you, City Council members, and you willing to acknowledge our employees and that employees are the backbone of our organization. So with that for personnel, this budget proposes a three percent COLA for all full-time positions. Funds are also budgeted for the city's pay plan implementation for the all other group. And this budget also includes funds to begin a new three-year cycle, the first year of which covers the Police Department. And this will also include a compression study for this group. The city's health insurance did increase six percent. Employees' and retirees' only coverage is covered by the city at one hundred percent still. One addition that I would like to propose is this budget includes one floating holiday for all full-time employees. The next is personnel expenditures on your following page. This budget includes expenditures for a total of one hundred and ninety-seven full-time physicians. There are three new physicians that are proposed in this budget. Physicians are listed below. One is a new full-time lieutenant physician for the Regional Police Department. This position will be directly responsible for overseeing the city's student resource officers, SROs, revitalizing our community watch program, and this position would also oversee the lake warden and downtown officer positions. Other personnel expenditure that's proposed for a new physician is one new full-time lab supervisor position for the water treatment plant. And the third and final that is proposed in personnel is moving one part-time physician to a full-time physician in the penthouse. Next in your outline is capital outlay request. As we discussed at our budget work session, looking at capital outlay request, this proposed budget does not include any capital outlay. This was necessary in order to budget the proposed budget. This budget is also balanced without using any fund balance or retained earnings as well. Capital request for one million eight hundred and six, eight hun- excuse me, one million eighty-six thousand, forty-six dollars in the general fund is recommended utilizing the expected revenue and or expenditure surpluses for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. In your budget notebooks, you'll see page eight-nine in your budget books that references what that should be allocated for based on order of importance. Next is administration. The one that we are not comfortable recommending any carryover funding is to fund requests in the Water and Sewer Fund at this time. This fund will be extremely tight this year as we look to balance, and therefore, we would request that we do not consider any capital at this time. This fund is extremely tight because of rising chemical costs that both our plants are experiencing, and then inflation in some of the current projects we have. And I apologize, I skipped one bullet point in Parks and Recs. Capital outlay request for twenty-six thousand in the Parks and Recreation Fund is also recommended utilizing the expected revenue and or expenditure surpluses for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget year. And please see page eight-ten in your budget notebooks. Also, in your budget notebooks, I thought it might be helpful this year, as many of you are aware, I'm a visual learner. So what I did was, each of those capital requests, there is a photo in your budget notebook of what it looks like, along with estimates. The one thing I apologize that I did not get included in time was the Police Department group, so that is what you have. But I did include these in your budget notebook, um, again, so you can see exact picture of what a rubber tire over looks like, um, that we're looking at. The next item I'd like to address is the Fire Department did request a new fire truck. Um, the purchase of the new fire trucks were nine hundred and seventy thousand. We did remove cap- we did remove from capital outlay. However, city administration recommends paying the current fire truck debt off in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand, which would open up additional financing options. Takes approximately four years to build a new truck. The city would need to re-purchase the new fire truck by July first of twenty twenty-three in order to secure the nine hundred and seventy thousand price that's been quoted. City administration will be bringing this item to the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three City Council meeting for your consideration, so we can go ahead and look at moving on that. Are there any questions at this time? And again, we do have one there, and it's certainly the will of Mayor and Council. If you would like to have a second budget work session on May the twenty-third at five thirty, that is up to you if you would. If not, it would go to public hearing in June.
I have a question regarding our, uh, water and wastewater. Uh, I know that we did not increase our, how much we're charging for water, but have we, um, considered what new users that we'll have, how we will increase usage? Like people moving into Greensville? We're not increasing our prices, but we should be increasing the number, the amount of water that gets used, right? That we build.
In theory, yes, but please keep in mind, we do have a lot of new construction residential homes proposed, but we've not saw that built at this time. So that's hard to kind of navigate because we do know that growth is here. It's accounted for, but it's not been built at this time. Thank you.
Police?
Yes.
To the manager, uh, you recommended one new position in the Police Department, and that, uh, will be a lieutenant position. He will assume the responsibilities of the lake warden and downtown officer position in addition to other duties. Who currently does the, uh, lake ward and downtown officer for two?
So currently, there is a lieutenant in administration, and that lieutenant, that's what we were talking about at our budget work session. Currently, all of your SROs, all of your administration, your lake ward, downtown officer, all is being forced in that one position. So this would break that off. Thanks.
I have one comment. I think we talked about the lab position. You said that position does save us money, right?
It will. Now, that's hard to project exactly how much, but it will help us, and we did decrease some of the costs on what you see on contracted services. Where it will be more savings for us is the ability to where if there is a test that we need to do, where we some, see something, we can now do those tests in-house versus having to wait twenty-four to forty hours to send those off. That will help reduce if there's any, um, type of maneuvers we need to make to bring our plants back in line. We can look at that quicker and respond more adequately.
So with that lab position, does it require any needed equipment that we don't have?
No, ma'am. Most of that, we, we already have the testing in-house. It's just you have to send it off to have someone certify it.
Any other question? I think I'd like for us to do a little more study of this weekend before we decide whether or not we need that additional data. Is that okay with Council?
Yes, sir.
Would you please, just be straight there. What, what would you recommend?
Recommended that we have another weekend of study of the, of the, of the book before we decide whether or not we need another work session.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda would be public comments. Give us your name, address.
My name is Valencia Abbott. My address is ten thirteen Rosemount Drive, Greensboro. I am here this evening to inform you... All right, let me start over. Okay. I hope everyone has heard, um, that Rockingham County has been awarded two historical markers uh, for the United States Supreme Court case of Briggs versus Duke Power. This case with its Rockingham County origins was, was started when fourteen African-American employees of the Duke Power steam station in Draper filed a complaint with E E O C. This was two years before the assassination of Martin Luther King Junior and eleven years after the murder of Emmett Till. So, to put this courageous act in context for these thirteen plaintiffs, um, James Martin, uh, would get a promotion, and he's the only one that I've documented, um, that has a college education. But to put this in context, this was more than signing a note and placing it on a supervisor's desk. The civil rights trail marker will be located at the mark, and the state historical marker will be at the hospital, um, between the hospital and the library in Eaton. And even though the markers will not be physically in Greensville, the connection to our city is clear. For this, not for the action of James Arthur Briggs, then the president of the Greensville branch of the N double A C P, and Willie Boyd, who will become the official spokesperson of the group, and later will become president of the Greensville branch of the... and later will become president of the Greensville branch of the NAACP. This moment in history may not have happened. I'm here this evening to inform you about this honor that has been bestowed on our county and solicit your support for this next couple of months as we plan the dedication ceremonies. The civil rights trail marker dedication ceremony is scheduled for August first, and the state historical marker is planned for October. This case is a continued legacy that opened workplace nationwide and removed barriers for African-American women and other groups. It is a growing legacy that will fuel local tourism and education. Just last week, a historian from Georgetown made a request for a visit here to gain information about the Briggs versus Duke Power company. The North Carolina Historical Marker Program is one of the oldest such programs, continuous operation in the United States. And here in the county, we have twenty-five, but only two are people of color.
Do, no?
Does anyone else want to make a public comment? See none? We move on to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I'll try and go through the budget a long night. A couple of items that just want to bring to your attention was, I guess, the April city council meeting. We had looked at and released the contract for the concession stands at J.C. Park. We did have one group that bid on that, and we have awarded that to the Old North State. It will be effective May the, excuse me, today's date until twenty-twenty-six. So it will be for a three-year contract. And they actually, it will be for two thousand a year. So that is a significant increase from what we had in prior. That was just seven hundred a year. Couple other items to note. The Sessqua Centennial Celebration for the Month of May will include our roaring nineteen twenties party this weekend, Saturday, May the thirteenth, from two to five P.M. at the penthouse. And then also, the Redsville Police Department will have an open house on Wednesday, May the seventeenth, from four, four P.M. to seven P.M. And then also, bus stop shelters. We have an ribbon cutting on May thirty-first at twelve P.M. at the bus stop shelter located across here at the library. The streetscape project. I am very, very happy to announce that we are nearing completion on that, and we have actually worked on a press release that will be sent out very soon. I was looking at our city partner GR, she finished that up, so I appreciate that. We are very proud to announce that the city of Greensville lost no parking spaces during the streetscape. When we first started looking at this, we thought there may be, we may lose four to five. But once we did our restriking, we gained all of them back. So we lost no parking spaces for that. And I'd also like to note, we do have five hundred and seventy-four parking spaces in downtown Greensville. Also, we're going to be working with merchants on May the fifteenth. We did get word today that they will start their crosswalk stamping and repaving downtown. So again, just trying to report with completing that project. The other exciting news is we have a great partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, and we'll be partnering on a series titled Learn How to Place Your Bet on Greensville. This series will be a three-part series. The first series will begin next week. That's May the eighteenth, from eight-thirty to ten-thirty at the penthouse. It is open to anyone. So anyone you know that would like to attend, please let us know. We'll send them an invitation. We are sending out some invitations to individuals we know are interested, but this is free and open for anyone to attend to learn how to place your bet on Greensville because we're growing. Also, another item to note, on Saturday, May the twentieth, we are going to be hosting our Employee Appreciation Event at Lake Greensville. And we have had a great committee together that's been led by our adjourned director, Leanne Basinger. Appreciate that. All of our staff members were really excited. It's a carnival thing. So I hope that each of you, mayor and city councils, bring your families out, friends and families, and have a great day with us because we'll also be announcing the twenty-twenty-two Employee of the Year. So we're trying to do something a little bit different to really showcase our employees. So please come out to that event. It's Saturday, May the twentieth, from eleven A.M. to three P.M. at Lake Greensville. And then the last thing I did want to go over in your agenda packets under Ms. Lane is something that I wanted to start doing was to do a lunch and learn with the city manager and assistant city managers. So our first lunch and learn is going to be Thursday, May the eighteenth. And we thought it would be very beneficial to have topics to cover. It's open to any of our city staff to come. We're going to rotate between facilities. So our first lunch and learn will be May the eighteenth, and we'll be going over the budget process, and that will be at Public Works. And then our next one will be Tuesday, July the twenty-fifth. It will be going over what the classification, compensation, and compression study that the city does every year for PTRC. That will be housed at the police department. Then on Tuesday, September the nineteenth, we'll be going over benefits and retirement with our employees, and then that will be at the fire department. And then last will be Thursday, November the ninth, which is the most important, effective communication and how we can all strive to do better. So with that, I appreciate the opportunity, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, manager Wood. Then we'll have council member reports. We'll start with Mayor Prosser.
Thank you, Mayor. I've only got a couple of things. On April the twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth, I attended the league conference at Charlotte. Quite a few of my city council members, we had a really big time. Not only was the education a good thing, but I think it was a bonding event as well. Everybody was a little closer together. On May the sixth, I observed the youth soccer league games at Lake Greensville. Tremendous crowd out there. They've got a really nice program out there at Lake Greensville. A lot of attendance, a lot of participation. You know, this afternoon, I attended the Larned and Mabes Association meeting.
Thank you, sir. Next, Barbara DeGiume.
Thank you, ma'am. I had a wonderful month this month, and I attended the city council special meeting, and then I attended the RDC business meeting, that zone. I think where we discussed a lot of important issues that are important to development of this area. I attended the city council meeting, the tri-state ribbon cutting, which integrates, which I thought fascinated to have it integrating steel into the design of the building. Also attended the Redsville Franchise Planning meeting, which I think will be effective and we're going to continue that thanks to Diane Swier. Also, the ribbon cutting for the Salt Von out on Bass Creek extension. It displays the past, the present, and the future. I attended the city board budget meeting. I also attended the reside and Redville gathering at Market Square, where we had representatives of each area of the city there, which is very interesting. Then we found there were ribbon cutting, and also attended the Compton's in Charlotte. And the multicultural day at Market Square, which is very effective. Thank you.
Diane Swier, she's been sitting here for a while.
Good evening, council. Thank you so much, and I'm sorry I'm losing my voice as it hits while you're in the sun, as pressure is building. We have had very eventful last few weeks, and going to continue to have very eventful next few weeks. So the few things I wanted to point out, we have the Redsville night of grasshoppers coming up. That's this coming Friday evening. We do have tickets available if you have not gotten your tickets. Next week, we have the Larned Place Your Bet on Redsville. I believe Ms. Judy sent you all invitations earlier today. So you all should have your own personal invitation to that event. We'd love to have you attend. It is the first of three, and we've mentioned it, but we are very, very excited. I just wanted to take a minute to explain, there have been a lot of questions. The first part is a panelist event where we have one of your own. Also, so Barbara will be on there, also city council for Dable, because the idea arrived that we're trying to partner and kind of cash in on what's happening with the casino. And we have multiple other folks that are going to participate. The second part will be a Y Redsville, and it also will have some data, and there will be some presentation of information about how in the third. And that will be also been kind of like a vendor and like a networking event where each of us, Summer, myself, Judy, my board members, Main Street board members, any of you who would be willing, would literally like hand-deliver folks to each other. So we're trying to matchmake landowners, brokers, investors, people who already own a franchise or a retail store. Because we feel like there are a lot of opportunities, and we want to build on the things that you all have been doing through the last several years. We kind of got hindered by COVID, but the idea is to take our personal relationships that all of our organizations have and match them together to see what kind of things we can do. And there have been some great examples and a lot of great discussion. The county has also contacted and won, dealt with the article that Judy helped us with the Tri Business Journal. It was wonderful, wants to be a part of it. This is a really great opportunity for a lot of partnerships. So if you can, we'd love to have you. We really do need RSVPs just so we can make sure we have enough for everybody. That is next Thursday, eight-thirty A.M. at the penthouse. Really excited too to be partnering with the Redsville Luggies. Their opening night is next Saturday. All chambers, all Redsville. We're going to have businesses set up on the concourse. We're having the owners, Girl Street Music, she will be singing the National Anthem. It's just very exciting stuff. So please come out to that. They reduced the tickets to five dollars for chamber members, so. And then we have, leadership Rockingham applications are out, and then Ms. Lane is excited about that. If you know anybody that would be interested. And then we've got lots of things coming up. The June coffee, which is going to be, if you see at the back, only June first, and that's at JT Yogurt and Coffee Shop on Freeway Drive. And then we have the ice cream social in July. I'm not going to avoid all the women's events, they are there for you. I will email them again. But we do have a lot of those, including the Scat Bus Shelter, which I'm really excited about because I think that's awesome. I love driving around seeing those. So they're all listed there for you. If anybody has any questions, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Diane. You also want to speak?
Thank you, sir. This was a busy month for me because I was out of town a lot. But on the twelfth, I attended the tri-state steel ribbon cutter. And just like Barbara said, that was really nice. It was just very interesting to find out how he had incorporated the materials that he sells into his building and the shelving and the offices and everything. It was really great. And so anytime you need a little bit of aluminum, iron, steel, whatever, two feet, three feet, that's the place to go. On the thirteenth, I had the Kiwanis Club. The eighteenth, we had a special city council meeting. On the nineteenth, I attended Global Markets in Greensboro. That was a program by the North Carolina Department of Commerce about exporting. On the twentieth, a Kiwanis Club, and I had the speaker for that meeting, and I was very proud to have Summer Wood, our city manager, to be our speaker to tell us all about everything that was going on downtown with our streetscape. On the twenty-first, I'm sorry to say, I attended the funeral of Jenny Brooks. Jenny was a very, very important citizen and part of the Redsville Downtown Corporation. And she loved the Redsville, and we certainly loved her. She will be greatly missed. On the twenty-first, the Farm Bureau ribbon cutting. I got there one hour late because my time was wrong, but I did go. So on the twenty-fifth to the twenty-eighth, I attended the NCLM Concord in Concord, North Carolina. Also, the reside in Redsville at Parkett Square. So it was busy, even though I was out of town a lot. Thank you.
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes, thank you. I attended the North Carolina League of Municipalities Conference and Concord. And on April the twelfth, I attended also the tri-state steel ribbon cutting. And on August, April sixteenth, I was invited to give the school board opening prayer. And I did. And then on May fourth, I was also a participant in the National Day of Prayer here in front of our city hall. And that is my report.
Councilwoman Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. Due to the length of time tonight, I'm going to cut mine short. I have nineteen items listed. So this has been a very busy month, and it kept me from cleaning house. So I was very tickled over that. One of the things I'd like to, on April the twenty-second, I attended the Governor Reed's Founder's Day, and I'd like to thank all of those that participated in that, especially the historical committee that came in costume. It was kind of a muggy, hot, rainy, often-own day, and they wore their costumes very well. Also, let's see, on May the sixth, we had the shred event, which was last Saturday here. And Mr. Harding, I am going to put you on the spot. Do you have a count with how many cars came through?
Fifty-three.
Pardon?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three. Thank you, thank you. So we appreciate that. And that was put on by the appearance commission, and look forward to another one in the fall possibly. Also, on May the sixth, I attended the Lantern Festival at Lake Redsville. I can't describe that in words. It is a very emotional festival. It's very nice. I felt very comfortable, very safe, very low-key. And it was my understanding, two thousand, two hundred in tickets were sold. And it just goes to show, we can bring people to Redsville. We can bring people to Redsville. I did not really see anybody other than city employees and staff that I really knew. Met a lot of people out of town, and there were a lot of people there. And Judy may speak more on it, but a lot of people from out of state. A wonderful, wonderful festival. I hope they will return again next year. And then on Sunday morning, I was fortunate enough to be invited to Community Baptist Church. And they are, believe it or not, for us older people, myself included, they celebrated their fiftieth anniversary when they started their school. And that was pretty amazing. It's hard to believe that they had a school there for fifty years, and they showed old pictures and things. So I was very tickled to be invited to that. So I will turn in the rest of my assignments to our clerk. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Preston.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure it was a sad note that I had to attend. Lieutenant Marvin Williams passed away April the twenty-second. Marvin was a true lieutenant of the police department. It was my honor to serve with him most of that time, served thirty-plus years. Marvin was truly an advocate of Redville, and he was most delighted that two of his sons and his grandsons chose to become city employees. And so that's a third-generation family that I'm aware of. Maybe the only third-generation family that I'm aware of. Also, I would echo my colleagues' comments about Virginia Solomon Brooks. I also attended her funeral. And one thing, she said many kind things about it, and I appreciate that. But one thing I would add, she was particularly proud of receiving the regional downtown.
Champion.
Champion, thank you, thank you. Regional down champion. She was selected as regional down champion, and she was most proud of that. So we're mourning her death. That concludes my remarks.
We're going to forego my list since we've been here so long on tonight and just to make you aware of the fact that I added three that I hadn't put on my list to start with after listening to our council members give their reports. But I'll turn in my report. I'd like to also say that I do appreciate. in my report. I'd like to also say that I do appreciate the employees of the city of Reesville. You guys just make this just a wonderful place to live. And you've got council support in anything that you need to do. And just want to let you know that we support you and we love you. We thank you. We're going to move to the first floor conference room for a closed session to consult with an attorney, to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and to discuss real estate matters pursuant to NCGS 143, that's 318.1183 and 5. And we're also going to discuss economic development. We're going to have a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
We will not be returning. Those in favor, raise your right hand.